Are you ready? We're good to go. So on that, we will call up meeting order if we could. First order of business is to look for additions or additions to the agenda. And we do have one, I'd like to move the presentations up under, well, after item B, between B and C. So move the presentations into that slot to, so some of these folks need to get back to doing other things, so support, comment them. That's support with that change.
It was all I thought that was a motion. All right, give it the motion.
That's a suggestion. You made the motion.
There we go.
You got the support, right?
However it works.
Everybody clear?
Yep.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, we have the agenda. Thank you. Rule has been taken. Okay, we have rule. Next is pledge of allegiance. Throw up these guys and try some pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item would be to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes in November 14, 2023, regular session of this board. Your pleasure.
So much.
Your motion's supported. Any comments, questions, or additions or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, moving down, next would be presentation. So Jerry, would you like to come forward? I'd like to come up with presentations for our state representative. Which one would you first?
Let's start with the chief.
Start with the chief, okay.
Mr. House.
Mr. House.
I didn't fit on that one, did I?
Given your, your 50 years of service, Roger Hull, Senator Hull, and I would like to present you with this tribute to all your years of service. I won't go through and read it in detail.
Okay.
But, you know, I can say, you know, 30 years is a career, 40 years is a commitment, 50 years is a calling. So, but I would like to present this with you from our gratitude for all your service to the community and to the state.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it on going there. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you. Same for you. Your 50 years as commitment to this community and to fire department is beyond recall. It's just an honor to have somebody that's committed to this community for this long. And your service is much appreciated by both Roger, Senator Roger Hull, and myself. In honor of that, I'd like to present you with the tribute from Roger and myself.
Thank you very much.
Harold, grant me possible get a picture of all three of you, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I can't forget you, Roger.
You might stand right up here real quick and we'll get a picture of all three of you and we'll be out of here.
They're out.
Do you want to hold up your? Yes, thank you.
Congratulations again.
100 years of service. Amazing.
Thank you, thank you.
George White.
Oh, yeah.
When he gave me my first set of gears, he said, "Son, if you give me six months, I'll give you a life center."
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is why they give me.
Not many cities do that.
No, it's a huge commitment.
That's under way.
President said a huge calling. I don't understand my answer. So with that, we'd like to entertain a motion to receive those presentations into the minutes of this meeting.
This is important.
Your motion's support, comments, questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to hearings. We'd like to set a public hearing for December 12, 2023, at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the agenda allows, to consider an application from Blair Capital LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property at 127 Superior Street. Your pleasure to set the hearing. Motion's support, any comments or questions?
Our last meeting, we set the district for the commercial rehabilitation district. This is the second step of the actual hearing, the application itself. It requires a public hearing. There's a notice, we'll go in. We'll have a public hearing on the 12th. And that'll be official, we'll send us a certificate and the city commission sends us information back that they accepted. Is Ryan operating under another LLC? Is Blair Capital LLC?
Yes.
One of them.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. We are sure motion is carried and we set a hearing. Moving on down, recommendation on bids. We are to consider a resolution to receive bids for municipal building parking lot improvements and award the project contract, which includes alternate number one and alternate number two to the recommended bidder, also to approve the corresponding request for purchase and authorize the near executive direct related agreement. The following bids were received on November 14, 2023, and number two received, the Robin Hirsch Excavating of Claire is the low bid of $119,567.75, and Isabella Corporation came in at $257,840. So the recommendation, as stated above, was for the lower bid of $119,567.75. Your pleasure on these bids.
Move to award the bid to Robin Hirsch Excavating, Claire, Michigan. Approved purchase.
Support. Here, we have a motion's support, any comments or questions?
I am just a little bit concerned, that big of a difference in that. Makes me a little nervous.
No, we did try to go out for bid. This is the driveway in front of the fire hall off of Court Street here, or, yeah, Court Street. And then the employee drive approach there. It also includes redoing the front steps out here in the west, west portion of it. We put this out for bid eight, seven months ago, eight months ago?
Yeah, about April, April, March.
And we received no bids, zero, nothing. So when we did get the bids in, we did, obviously, we said the same thing. That was my question when we were talking about a staff. Gosh, $119 was, was, and then Dave reported, no, that the high bid was $257. You know, that's, the bids, I mean, we put them out twice now. You take out the alternate, which would be the steps out front, I think that shaves off $7,000, roughly $7,000. So take $7,000 off of that, but if we're doing that, we might have to take care of those front steps and get those, because we do get some comments every once in a while, people have a little trouble walking up them, that we'd rather take care of than have an issue. Other than just...
The references were checked and they sure not good for her, Robin Hirsch, because we haven't used them before, have we?
Yes, we have.
We have, okay.
The parking...
Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
Dave Ringel, Public Services Director. You're correct in wondering that, the cost. I can't explain it other than if they have other jobs to do and if they might have guessed that if we didn't get any bids on in the spring, they might be the only bidders. I do know they were very interested in it, they came here and looked at it, the higher number did. Hirsch Excavating, we have worked with them one other time before, that was for the parking lot next to the gas station, Vicodin Bridge, where we did that parking lot project, and they were good to work with on that company, so, or, excuse me, on that project. That was a parking lot with asphalt and some minimal concrete work, so it's similar to this, although there's much more concrete work on this one. Yes, that was our question as well, when they bid on it, they actually called us and asked what they missed. So looking at the numbers, it's about, close to $30,000 over project estimated cost. So it's over budget, but it's still within that ballpark. And I say that with some of the crazy numbers we've been getting in the last few years. So like Eric you mentioned, we put it out for bid in March, April, we received zero bids, so.
Yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is, there's still a lot of federal money out there chasing projects that there just are not crews to do. So the contractors, obviously, are paying more to wages to their people, which has driven up prices, as well as they're able to fatten the profit margin, so frankly, that's...
There's more projects than there are people to do that, right?
Absolutely. And that drives...
And that's going to continue for the next several years.
We're going to see it. So just a question about the scope of the project. Eight inches of concrete, I think it said, called for on the...
That was alternate for the...
And we're doing that, correct? So that's the alternates, so.
Twenty, yep.
And eight inches is sufficient for those trucks?
Yes, we could probably do six, but the idea is, if it's based on the repetitive driving of the heavy weight of the trucks, eight inch, if you look in front of the, the high school done eight inch, as well as Avalon Tahoe, we've recommended eight inch for their drive approaches, and it should hold up. Right now, if we were to take that out, it was put in a six inch, and that concrete there is just not holding up, and the asphalt, we could have put it back in as asphalt, that wood, the asphalt portion, if you're familiar with it, but that would add significant time to the project's goal. That's another reason why the cost will be higher, we did this in three different phases, just to try to keep access to the fire, certain fire base. But asphalt would be more time intensive, but it's actually holding up reasonably well. But the concrete really is, I think that was redone at some point in the late, mid, mid 90s as part of the...
That was, that was actually done in, about 2000. Like in year 98.
Late 90s.
It was one of my first jobs that we worked on, so 2000.
We got 20 years on six inch, we're going to get 40 years on eight inch, all right?
I should, I don't know. The basis is under it, but we're going to see when we rip it up, because I do not know what they did as a part of that original scope. But we look at it, it should have lasted longer than it has, but we'll know when we rip it up, what we see.
Does the bid include any corrections to base?
Yeah, we put a lot of the numbers, just because we don't know what's there until we get there, but yes, there's aggregate put in there, as well as some sand base, if there's anything that's questionable, we'll be taking out.
And then the parking lot itself, is just a, is it just a surface over what's there, or tearing it all up?
Parking lots, this parking lot was already done, we put it out as a, as together. We did a seal and stripe for this parking lot behind us, the one, the public one, as well as the church. So we separated, and this is for the construction portion, for the drive approaches, for the fire hall, as well as where the police cars park, and the steps that go to the fire hall, those will be replaced, and then the steps here for the city hall. So concrete drive approaches are what this deals with.
Okay. And a question on those steps, because they seem to deteriorate fast on those, are we using a regular road salt on those? Is that causing some of the problems with that?
Salt in general is bad on new concrete, as far as these, and it depends on how much they're overworked and that type of thing, but yes. And safety wise, we're looking at some different ones that can melt it, but yeah, it's very hard on concrete, especially the first year, when it's brand new, when you put it on there.
There's different melting compounds that you can use, and perhaps we should look into, at least on the steps, so that they don't deteriorate quite so fast, if we could use something that's a little bit...
Beet juice.
At home, I know we use this stuff as pet friendly, I forget what it is even, but it's supposed to be easier on the concrete and the pets as well, so.
Yep, I've tried to use personally, who cares? It's kind of a trial and error. I've used the friendly stuff on my own personal one, did the same thing, it bites holes in it, so yeah, we're going to try to do some experimenting on some different ones, because that's what hasn't helped this, plus if you get a crack in it, freezes, pops, Michigan's not kind of them, so. So if anybody knows anything, let me know if you've had any examples of stuff you've used and it works.
A real question, what about beet juice? Have you guys tried that at all? Beet juice?
No, not to my knowledge.
Supposed to work.
Spritzed.
Trucks are spraying it in some places, I think Isabella County is, is used on their roads.
Doesn't it take a whole different setup than the self-trucks, or no? I thought it was a different truck.
I don't know.
Do you have a taker to do it? Brine truck? Do we have a brine truck?
Not a taker to do that.
So in the back of the...
Rattlers are volunteering here.
To be a bashful, you know, streets, we have one, one street left, that's ground, so we don't have...
So we don't brine anything?
Brine anything, yeah.
All right, any more questions on that? Okay, thank you, David. And I believe we have a motion on the table, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no. Motion is carried, and we are going to award bid there. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Next up, we need consideration of a resolution to ratify the following investments for the city funds. And it looks like there's, what, $255,006, $6,11, what, $1.3 million, somewhere around there, Curtis? In six different investments, vehicles, US Treasuries and CDs, it looks like. Any interest in ratifying those funds?
Move to approve.
Support. Here, we have motion and support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we are going to award bid there. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Next up, we need consideration of a resolution to reschedule the city commission meeting, which is normally scheduled for the second Tuesday, oh, wait, February, which would be February 27, 2024, and the recommendation is to move it to February 28, 2024, as the February 27th on 2024 is going to be the presidential primary election day, and one of us, at least, will be very busy.
The second Tuesday in February cannot possibly be the 27th.
No, this is moving it to a Wednesday.
Oh, sorry.
Isn't that?
It should have been the fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, my mistake.
Oh, you're right, yes.
It is my mistake, yes.
I was just looking at the dates.
24 hours in September, is there a sleeping sheet?
Yes.
I read over that three times, Roger, sorry.
Yeah, I read over that too.
But that, that is the date that we're going to get for the primary.
Yes, I will.
So the dates are correct with the...
Yeah, they're just dated.
Yeah, the date is correct.
Isn't the second, it's the, before.
So the meeting on the 20th, that's true.
So yeah, we're moving that to a Wednesday.
Yep, it would be the following Wednesday as the primary election. We've done that, the day after.
Move approval.
Support.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Last chance for comments or questions, all those in...
I'll be out of state that day, so I'm not going to be here. Give me a forewarn.
Okay. Anybody else? I don't see conflict in my calendar, so there may be others come up, but in any event, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we've changed that date, so. Thank you, Sarah, and good luck with the election. I'm sure you do a fine job, as you always have in the past, so we appreciate your work on this, and your team. I know you do a lot of the heavy lifting, but you also have a good support system behind you, so.
I do, I cannot complain.
I just appreciate it. Good. Item number three, we are to consider a resolution to approve the proposed three-year plan, three-year plan, as presented for tree removal and replacement in the downtown district.
Move to approve.
Support. We have motion support, any comments or questions? We have talked quite a bit about this at various levels, so if you want anything...
Yeah, and just, I appreciate we're following here to this point to begin. We hope if, if we have a light winter, we may be able to start to remove some of the trees, if we're not plowing snow constantly, we can start to remove some of those trees in that first phase, possibly here in February. But if people want to look at that, we head on the DDA website, so people can look at the three-year plan, they can use the Google map, click on and off the different phases, and look at what we're doing, and they can see what trees are being replaced with what type of tree, so.
Cross your fingers and hope it works.
Yep, yep, yep.
It should, I think it looks like a good plan, I think it was well thought out, and a lot of good, a lot of hard work went into it, so.
And I think the tree species that, between the DDA and this board and on staff, I think the community will be pleased to see over the years, so. And if we're lucky enough, as these trees have lasted, that if we get 20 years, 30, you know, 25 years out of these next trees, it'll be serving us very well.
And one thing we did learn in the whole process is, there's no such thing as a perfect tree for a downtown district. They all have problems, and they all have challenges, so. Anybody else with comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, thank you. Moving down to ordinances, we are to consider a resolution to adopt ordinance number 841, which is an ordinance addressing the flood plan, flood plane management provisions of the state constitution, state construction code, excuse me. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support. Got a motion, support?
We discussed a couple meetings ago, we have, we contracted the county for building inspections to get everything up to date. We met with Eagle, with a building official, and a couple staff members. We need to update, and we do now have our local agreement with Gresham County for the flood plane management through the building official. They approved their side, we approved our side at the last meeting, so that is good to go. This is our last piece that we need to approve, that states that we are in agreement with our agreement, and that it puts us in the driver's seat so that we can continue to have flood plane insurance available for our residents that do need it for their mortgages, and if they don't have a mortgage, they can access that insurance program.
Good. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, thank you. Moving down to ordinances, we are to consider a resolution to adopt ordinance number 841, which is an ordinance addressing the flood plan, flood plane management provisions of the state constitution, state construction code, excuse me. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support. Got a motion, support?
We discussed a couple meetings ago, we have, we contracted the county for building inspections to get everything up to date. We met with Eagle, with a building official, and a couple staff members. We need to update, and we do now have our local agreement with Gresham County for the flood plane management through the building official. They approved their side, we approved our side at the last meeting, so that is good to go. This is our last piece that we need to approve, that states that we are in agreement with our agreement, and that it puts us in the driver's seat so that we can continue to have flood plane insurance available for our residents that do need it for their mortgages, and if they don't have a mortgage, they can access that insurance program.
Good. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, thank you very much, and thank you, David. Appreciate the information. Okay, moving down to reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may receive, may move any of the items within this section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the Gresham Area Water Authority, November 21, 2023, draft meeting minutes, and One City Managers Newsletter. Your pleasure to have.
Need to pull them both? You want to talk about the water authority, or Rexanne? Do you want to talk about the water?
Well, we're just, just winding things down, and so we're probably moving to quarterly meetings as opposed to monthly, because we're just finishing up, waiting on supplies for things to finish, right?
Things are kind of quieted out as far as...
Where we pull it and whatever discussion...
We're going to pull both of them.
It sounds like there's been more to talk about.
Well, the quicker part is, things are winding down, construction's winding down, so there's no need to pull the...
I move to receive the Gresham Area Water Authority.
Hey, we have motion, support. Comments now. And do you have something, Roger, you want to start, or you want to go right to Dave?
No, Dave's got it.
You're our Dave.
Okay. I'm not addicted to this thing or anything, I just want to understand that. To Roxanne's point, heavy construction's winding down with the water authority, there's no need to have meetings every month, it's been hard to get a quorum in the last several, actually, the year or so, so we're going quarterly meetings, while houses are done. Upcoming projects, we discussed, cleaning of the exterior elevated tanks over on Lincoln Avenue, we're going to look at putting a cost in for the next budget cycle to get that clean. The other is going to be the second clarifier, we're going to look at having that taken down here in the next several months and have that repainted, and replace some steel that's probably likely to be rotted out, and moving forward with some of the security upgrades. There were also additional storm catch, excuse me, storm structures we had to put in. I believe there was two total for the storm. Where there were underground connections that were unknown, a lot of this, you don't find out until you open up the ground, you find out the surprises underneath. College had two storm connections that they themselves weren't even aware of, that we found and we were replacing some sections of storm. The stamped concrete down near Superior Street, the plan was to keep that because according to the records that we had from Superior Street, they pushed that water main out behind it to the north of it, so we would not have to rip that out. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case. We excavated it, we found a duck bank for the college. We stopped just shy of that. So to connect 10 feet of water main, we had to take that concrete out, put it back in because we didn't want to keep a 10-foot section of old water main in there because we upsized that to a 12-inch there, so we didn't want a section of four, excuse me, six inch in there. So there was a cost increase for that as well. So basically, what you see is the decorative concrete, that was a cost increase, extra storm work as part of that connection, or those connections we found at the college, concrete work and the addition of another catch basin.
Okay, questions? Everyone, we hit the corner and I forget the corner.
Yale and Harvard.
Yale and Harvard, they had a low spot.
That's where the additional catch basin was at.
So they have installed, I mean, additional catch basin for that.
And they've got an AD compliant grate on it too, so there's no issues with AD accessibility over that.
So the water now drains instead of pools?
Yes. And we observed enough place and it drains down in there, which was a nice advantage because that intersection was drained there and there was a flat spot in the curb. So instead of ripping out the whole intersection, you could put in a catch basin a lot cleaner and.
Is that something that the engineers should have caught when they were laying it out? I mean, that seemed like.
We knew what happened. There was a bust in the elevations on the design, but it wasn't caught because there was an issue with another contractor that was in the area that shouldn't have been. It was a perfect storm and basically threw out the concrete crew when they were over there, so things that normally get found in the process. People were kind of flustered over that, so they didn't put the time into the forms on that and that's why there's that, there was a belly in that curb. So anything in the future to do to remediate that, know the problem, but I'm just thankful that it wasn't more of an issue to replace that and make that drain away.
So should that be our expense or should that be the expense of the contractor?
Contractor.
The engineers or whoever designed or?
The initial thought was, that's why it was a bargain between us and Ward's Excavating. Goes both ways to be ethical on that. Both parties should have caught it before it was put in and so when we negotiated that cost for, to put that in, we put it in at unit cost because it was still an open contract and the contractor also bore in about $8,000 of that as well. So it was kind of a shared thing because it was shared guilt on that on both sides. Normally, what would have been found was the perfect storm that day and it didn't get caught, so.
So there was concession from the contractor on this?
Yep.
Okay.
No, that's what's nice about working with some of the contractors we work with is they want to work with us in the future, so. Ward's Excavating is a very good company, I'll sit on camera to work with just for the simple fact that they're embarrassed to buy it, because we saw it, it's like, you know, how do you not find this? So that's where it was at, so.
Okay. I do appreciate that it was addressed right away.
Had we caught it in the field like with us, what we probably would have done was extended the curb replacement, gone further off Yale, we could have addressed it at that time, but when I found out the backstories on it, it's a human error and I understand the circumstances that went around it, so that's why I believe to be ethical, there should be a cost, a shared cost in there.
Sounds fair. Anybody else with comments or questions? Hey, hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried. Thank you very much and thank you, David. Appreciate the information. Okay, moving down to reports of officers, boards and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution or any commissioner may receive, may move any of the items within this section for individual discussion vote. Before us tonight, we have the Gresham Area Water Authority, November 21, 2023 draft meeting minutes and One City Managers Newsletter. Your pleasure to adapt.
Need to pull them both? You want to talk about the Water Authority or? Roxanne, do you want to talk about the Water?
Well, we're just winding things down and so we're probably moving to quarterly meetings as opposed to monthly because we're just finishing up, waiting on supplies for things to finish, right?
Things are kind of quieted out as far as.
Where we pull it and whatever discussion. It sounds like there's been more to talk about.
Well, the quicker part is things are winding down, construction's winding down, so there's no need to pull the.
I move to receive the Gresham Area Water Authority.
Hey, we have motion, support. Comments now. And do you have something, Roger, do you want to start or you want to go right to Dave?
No, Dave's got Dave.
You're our Dave.
Okay. I'm not addicted to this thing or anything, I just want to understand that. To Roxanne's point, heavy construction's winding down with the Water Authority, there's no need to have meetings every month. It's been hard to get a quorum in the last several, actually, the year or so, so we're going quarterly meetings while houses are done. Upcoming projects, we discussed, cleaning of the exterior elevated tanks over on Lincoln Avenue. We're going to look at putting a cost in for the next budget cycle to get that clean. The other is going to be the second clarifier. We're going to look at having that taken down here in the next several months and have that repainted and replace some steel that's probably likely to be rotted out. And moving forward with some of the security upgrades that we've talked about there, maybe get some final approval on that and then we're moving forward with that. So if the bids go out on that here in the next couple weeks, so. Any questions? That's the Water Authority.
Some big projects coming your way, that and that still.
Everything ago was big.
Yeah, no, no, I just am surprised that this soon into it, because we just redid that whole plant.
No, no, the clarifiers were not redone.
They weren't.
No.
Are they there to identify this part of that project?
No, it'd be worked out at that point, but this is just regular routine maintenance that needs to be done on, those to be taken down, to be repainted, inspect any of the metal portions that start to rust out from being exposed to water and the chemicals that are in them. So we did the last one three years ago and now we're taking down the secondary.
And how long does that typically last?
A couple of months, as long as everything goes.
Well, I mean, the repair, the upgrade or the maintenance before you have to do it.
Oh, before you do it again, probably anywhere between 10 to 20 years depending on how long things go with it. So we project about 20 years and that's how fast time flies by when you spend that kind of money. You can see that, just like a roof, you just replaced that 30 years ago.
It does go by fast. Okay. Any more questions from the Water Authority from Roxanne or Dave? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And any opposed, say no? Motion is carried and received their report. No, didn't anyone care to receive the City Managers Newsletter? Support. Got a motion, support. Eric?
Yeah, I have a very short newsletter for you. Happy holidays. So anyway, some cool things moving along. Conditional land transfer with Pine River Township. Back in 2000 and 2003, the city entered into a what's called a 425 agreement for conditional land transfer with Pine River around certain pieces of property. These transfers of property were contingent upon providing water and sewer to portions of Pine River Township. And for doing that, there are certain pieces of land that, when those pieces of land get ready to develop, in this case, in this newsletter I provided, newsletter is the college property off of Charles Avenue, Smith Road in Township, Smith Charles. Those two pieces are currently in the township and are owned by the college. The college is planning to begin their development of their fieldhouse. I call it a recreation center here in my newsletter, but it's a fieldhouse, I've been mental. So they need water and sewer for that. So that being the case is part of that development and under our 425 agreement with Pine River Township, these properties would come into the city, the city limits. The new fieldhouse will go to just to the west of the soccer fields there in that open space there, that's where they plan to have that. The parcel to the north of the ball fields there is a separate parcel, but since we're doing this now, we might as well just get both those parcels done at the same time. Just wanted to provide this for you in the newsletter, so we'll have this on the agenda for the next meeting to approve the signatures that we need to do on our side and Pine River will do the same on their side to officially agree to bring these two parcels into the city. Those resolutions and agreements are sent down to the great seal for their review and then approval and then is added to our city map. Currently, these are non-taxable parcels, but as these items come up, it's the time that you take those parcels and bring them in for the benefit in the future of the community. You know, one day you never know, they could be not owned by the college, you know, things aren't forever, so we're moving forward with that agreement there. And from that, is there any questions? I know some folks have never heard of a 425 or just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understood the very basics of it and are comfortable with that.
Hey, any questions on 425 that happened also many years ago, 20 years ago, like that's 20 years ago, so.
And this would be very similar to when, you know, when, when we did development on east of Jerome and Hoffman Road. Right now, that property is in Pine River Township. The city does own that property though, but it will not come in the city until development happens. Once development happens, we provide water, sewer, and then that property will come into the city limits at that point, so same kind of thing there.
Just curious, what about, I think that's Mellinger's House, it's back there. Would it not make sense for them to come into the city since they could get water and sewer better from the city than they could from the septic system and stuff?
At some point, if they wanted to petition the city, since when that property then would be part of the city limits, since it would be then adjacent to our, then they could petition the city to do that.
So give the option down there where they don't have.
That's correct, yeah.
But that would be. It has to be their choice.
Yeah, it's their choice.
Sorry, we're not going to take it, but it's their choice.
When that development starts, it may be a better time to start laying by.
Well, it wasn't all that long ago where Big B's is now, with Greenstone Credit, that was township property for when I first got here. When we pushed the road to the west, that made sense too, they needed new water at that point because they wanted to allow them to drill another well, then they tapped into our water and decided, well, I guess we should probably come into the city. So that was just recently, well, like Dave said, 20 years ago. This is just recently.
Recently, 20.
In the grand scheme of things, that's recent.
And the other item I want to discuss, just to provide some information, the Prospect Building in the State Street Plaza, we call it the Prospect Building. It's that red building just off of Prospect that the city owns. Been around long enough, TD3 was there at one point, District Court was there at one point and the hospital, Gresham Community Hospital, I think it was called at that time, had an equipment locker in that building one time. Well, at this point, you know, as things have moved on, there's not a lot of investment that's been happening in that building over the years. We've been taking a look at what it would cost to rebuild that building and we're looking at, you know, about a half, a little half million dollars to redo everything that needs to be done there. As you can see, the building is built in right into the rail bank there, which is not ideal, is not typically what you would be allowed to do these days. And then long term, this is probably our prime location that we, if we ever get a train stop there with the rail line coming from Traverse City to Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor Traverse City line, this would be an ideal spot to have a station or the platform, however you want to term it, in this area. We do, you know, from a general fund standpoint, I'm trying to find, pull funds from general fund to demo building now, doesn't make a lot of sense, but there is some funding available through the state land bank currently in their fourth round for something like this. So we're going to throw an application in there through our newly recreated Gresham Community Land Bank to see what, if we may be able to get some funding to do that. Our initial estimates on that, that we are pulling together for the application, look to be about $163,000 for the demo. I know there's asbestos there because we found it in the tiles before and lead issues for abeyments and, let's see, demo, abeyments and then the restoration is pretty simple, just to go back to grass until seeding. So, but on the conservative side, just to make sure we got ourselves covered, we're looking at about $163,000. But for all those reasons, we think that's probably our best bet, you know, not just seeding for now, but long term, if we can get the funding now to. The only tenant in there currently is the Mid Michigan Railroad and we have them in there as a month-to-month lease. Everything else is empty and actually what we've been doing is, there's some furnaces in there that have been going in and taking parts from and reusing in other furnaces that we, that are still, you know, they're still working in other buildings. So it means a lot of work and really it's not the best location in the future if we, when, it's not if, when we get that rail line to come through, that's, that area is ideal for where that should be.
As near as I have been able to determine, that is the site of the original Elma Depot, either that or on the other side of the tracks, but that's where the original Elma Depot that you see pictures of, that's where it was.
And from a location standpoint, it's very, it's adjacent to the downtown, riverfront. College is right of the rail trail there, so like I said, it doesn't make sense financially to try to find a way to take it off our general fund. We got other needs that are needed in the community to demo something like that, but if we can get help from the state land bank, it may be an ideal time to do that. If, unless someone else has another thought, what are we going with it? Okay. Well, that's the two major things and just reminding the folks on camera that, you know, come home for the holidays is on December 8th and we do want to say if you want to keep up to date on what's going on, please like the, come home from the holidays Facebook page. Just been posting the, we have the carriage rides coming back for the first time in close to 10 years, I believe it's been. So those will be free, they'll first come, first served, so we're excited about bringing that back and that will be free for folks, just get in line and if they can get to you, they get to you. And then those runners out there and would like to support walkers too. Would like to support the Christmas decorations in downtown, come on to the Jingle Bell Run the next morning on Saturday the night and all the proceeds go to buying and replacing Christmas decorations in downtown, so.
Will they sign up online for that?
Yes, they can sign up online, yep, they can go right through the Facebook page and get that. And then, oh yeah, a shout out to Cindy Austin and Pat Luke Meyer who are then just tirelessly working on the gogresham.com calendar. That is on our website, so folks who go there, you want to know what's going on on a Thursday night, there's nothing going, yes, there's usually something going on on a Thursday night in town that you can go and enjoy. They've been doing a heck of a job tracking all this stuff down and we hope they can continue to make this perpetual thing, people providing the information and it gets up on this calendar, so.
I can remember dreaming 30 years ago of a calendar like that, that you could look on and see, you know, if you wanted to have an event, see what date might be over, what was going on and it never came to fruition until now, so it's neat.
Been a number of efforts over the years, you're right.
Yeah, it's been trying.
This has taken a major leap forward.
Yes, it has.
And thanks to both of them, it's, and if you have a chance to go out there and take a look at what they've, there is something going on almost every day of the week in town, so when someone says a town of 9,400 people, there's nothing happening, there is, it's just, I want to go do that.
Get up off the couch.
That's right. That's all that matters.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll talk, we can talk about that. I know Andrew always, I want to take his thunder away.
So for that, all in favor of receiving the City Managers Newsletter, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and received newsletter. Moving on to the new business, we've already covered the presentation that we moved up earlier to the agenda, so we'll go to number two, which is consideration of a resolution to adopt amendments as presented to the current City of Elma computer password policy. Your pleasure.
Move to adapt.
Support. Got a motion, support.
Yes, as we move forward with technology, there's other things that we do need to add. Yes, you know, to the support of the commission when we put in the dual factor authentication, we did not have that in our policy, so that has been added. In lockouts, we need to call our third-party vendor, currently it's VC3, I mean, we had IT right in there before, but we just changed that to our third-party help desk, just so we don't have to come back and change that. And believe it or not, we do have passwords for our BSNA system that we all use across the city for different departments, but we didn't have it in our policy for a password for our BSNA network and that was another recommendation, you know, it came through recommendation for our auditors that you guys need to have at least something in there about that, so that was added also. Other than that, everything has stayed the same, so.
Okay. And just questions? Who, do you have an internal committee or a group that decides like the complexity of passwords that you require and whatnot and who's monitoring that technology? I know like in my work, we've gone to at least 15 characters and you have to do special things and you have to, you know, the wind has to be coming from the southeast. I don't know how extensive you guys are going with that.
We don't have less than a committee or somebody over watching, you know, watching that, but our passwords now require those types of, you know, must have this character, yes, it does have to be. And then, you know, no one's happy about it, even me, that, you know, there's the changing of those passwords have to happen on a more continual basis.
Oh, yeah.
That it's good for one sign-in and you're good for two years, no, it's not like that anymore, so. But it's really about our third-party and the software, that's the kind of question that we haven't sat at a committee or anything and talked about. We did talk about this, the policy itself and department staff, I mean, went through the new requirements and things, but. Yeah, you're right, well, when you download a new piece of software or an app on your cell phone, now they're asking you, you know, do you want them to choose the password for you? If you choose that, you're never going to remember it. And just what they give you is like, you get it, I don't know, you must be some good for NASA or something to figure out what it is, but no, those, like I said, in the new passwords, it must contain nine, you know, characters and numbers, some special character and before, those things were, and those are good points, that's why, you know, the adding the new factor, dual authentication was a big huge jump for.
Well, as we've talked over the years, you know, you keep reading about all the hacking and the hijacking of your systems and being helped ransom and you just, whatever you can do to avoid that certainly is critical.
Absolutely.
There's attacks are daily, so.
And one of the key points that we did add in there is that your BSNA password cannot be the same as your network password, so if anybody did somehow get into the network, they still couldn't get into, because you can only access BSNA from the network currently, so you would need to be basically hacked to in order to get into the financial data, so.
Good.
Somebody just in the last couple of days got into a major healthcare system in five states and blacked out the emergency room.
Yeah, yeah, it happens all the time, it's not uncommon today, so it's, you've got to be diligent for at least as much as you can, so.
Yes, because you can always spend more money.
Oh, yeah.
With security, you can.
You can spend yourself broke, there's no doubt. But, okay, any other questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried and we've adopted the policy. Number three, we are to consider a resolution to adopt amendments as presented to the holidays policy in the City of Elma employee manual. Move to adapt. Support. Got a motion, support. Any questions, your background for changes?
The amendments, we have 10 holidays a year. The one that we're switching out that we have for the proposal is the New Year's Eve Day. In the past, that hasn't been a holiday for the City of Elma employees. What we had there instead was way back when I first came here, was called a birthday holiday and you got your birthday off. Then when the previous city manager came in, we changed that to a floating holiday, basically, that wasn't called a birthday holiday, so they could, the employee could use it throughout the year. The last several years, a lot of folks, they were encouraged if they wanted to take off New Year's Eve Day off, that they had to use that floating holiday, if they had a personal day or a vacation day, take it off, which causes some heartburn and other things to try to staff. Can't keep a building open if you're only going to have two people here, but if we gave them that option, they were taking it and some people were, you know, coming to work, but if, you know, from a staff, from a departmental standpoint, got to make sure that they have tasks to do that day, that they are doing their tasks. And if you don't have, let's say, for like transportation, you can't run the bus system with three people, like three, only three people wanting to come in that day, gave them the option of anybody to take that day off if they wanted to. So to cut all that out, make it cleaner, we talked about this in staff, we've been going over these policies, that just make New Year's Eve Day a, one of our, a nice holiday, get rid of the floating holiday, the former birthday holiday, so we still only have 10 holidays that we have officially. And most folks think we're closed on New Year's Eve Day anyway, a lot of people assume that that's going to be closed. It's a really slow time anyway, so that was the, that's one of the recommended changes. And the other has to do with our part-time employees when they receive their four hours of holiday pay. Currently, or previously, if you, well, if you accept this, if you accept this, part-time employees, once they're hired, they will receive four hours of holiday pay on each one of those days that are listed above. Previously, a part-time employee had to work 850 hours before they could receive holiday pay. We talked about as a staff and talked about as we're trying to recruit part-time folks to come work for us. Instead of having that extra hurdle over there, why don't we just make it, as soon as someone's hired on as a part-time individual, they receive their four hours of holiday and moving forward, so we hope that makes it a little easier and cleaner for payroll to keep track of, departmental to keep track of and just be something that when we're bringing. heads to keep track of, and, and just be something that when we're bringing people in, that we can say, "Hey, yeah, it's part-time, you're only going to get this many hours, less than 30, but, or 35." But, we do offer holiday pay at four hours per holiday of those 10 holidays, so I think that's something positive, and eventually, we do give it to them anyway, if they stick around, 100, 850 hours, so, that was the other change in there, that was the other change in the holiday.
Okay. Comments or questions? One thing, I guess, a couple things, budget implications of this, I assume it's negligible?
Yes.
Okay. Look at that.
Yep, we sure have. Currently, out of 41 employees, yeah, 41 part-time employees, 22 of those are currently already qualified under our old, the old policy, the way it's written. This would just bring on 19 new ones. From that, those, in looking at all those holidays, for those extra, looking at $11,400 over that year, that's split over six different departments, and about half of that is general fund employees, so.
And I presume these part-time include the seasonals?
No.
No, it does not include seasonals.
Seasonals are a whole separate category, different category of employee.
Okay. And they get none of this?
No.
Okay. Hard to be in trouble hiring seasonals.
There has been, last year was real tough, this year was better, but it still is tough.
No, it's still tough.
This year was better than last year.
Yeah, by one. But, it's still tough.
It was better than last year. We got to look at the positives, dude.
Well, we normally ask for six, we're lucky to get about four, this year we started out with four, and then through attrition, you end up with about two, maybe three. This year, we've got one more in monthly than we do at this time of year, so, it's tough.
I know there's always plenty of work for those folks, if there's any way to make it more attractive to get them, and get some of the jobs done, that, you know, trimming of the trail and stuff is especially, I hear a lot of comments about that, that we just don't get there, and that maybe we, we're not here as a way to, real trail.
The, when we talk about cemetery budgeting, the more we can have seasonals do cemetery, the better off we are on that fund. Previous year, we didn't have as many seasonals as we have this year, and that's why that fund was a, you know, a lot of whack, what we talked about. But, if that's something the commission wants us to explore as a staff, to look at, you know, what could we provide extra other than the hourly pay that we give those folks, and as they stay, we move them up a pay scale, too, isn't like they come in at the same rate if they've been working for us and they're good, we move them up. What's a different kind of part-time and seasonal, seasonals, we bring them in usually in April, they usually leave at the end of November, and we can work 40 hours a week, but if they go over 40 hours, we pay them overtime. Part-time, you cannot go over that 35 hours, because then.
Then they become full-time.
So, that's the big difference there, but since they are year-round, the part-time folks are year-round, in the past, like I said, we did provide them holiday pay for the, maybe for some certain hours, but we just thought, as we look at this, it made sense to do it this way, and all the department heads thought it made sense as well, so.
Could we, could we hire seasonal, like, for eight to 10 weeks, for like, college students or high school kids, from like, first of June till middle of August?
We have, we have it out there.
Is that, is that?
Yeah, we would take.
It's an optional thing, we just don't get much for applications, but yeah, the last two years, I've actually looked at, some help is better than none, and so, anything's on the table, as long as they can legally operate the equipment, that they're the age to do it, because a lot of people, younger, can't do it with insurance, but.
Just.
Yeah, there's some. All right. Very good, thank you. Any more questions, or? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried. Would there be any interest in paying appropriations tonight?
Some would.
Your motion is support, any comments or questions on those bills? Hearing none, all those in favor paying, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, and we repeat the bills. Mr. Comments?
Roxanne, would you like to lead off tonight?
Just thank you again to our fire chief, Harold, and Mr. Snyder for their work for our city. And I can't think of anything else. Thanks.
Danny?
I just echo Roxanne's statement, as well as the congrats to the college and their whole team and their success so far, so, congrats to Jason, he's done a good job with that program.
I saw Dave Zerby today at Starbucks, and I was saying, "Oh, the band is done for now," he's like, "Hell, no, it's not done for us." I said, "Oh, yeah, no, I forgot that," so, yeah.
That was a big part of that game.
It's a little different in September than December 2nd, it's going to be.
Absolutely, yes.
They'll be dressed a little better.
Yes.
And, you know, if they enter, thank you. Roger?
Those two things, again, re-echo that, 100 years and two people is amazing, okay, 19, 50 years. I had just come into Alma 50 years ago, 52 years ago, I was in Vietnam, that's a long time for those guys to be working, that's amazing. We pulled off our 31st Thanksgiving dinner at First Presbyterian Church, and I had a terrific amount of help from a lot of people. We served just under 500, we did 40 turkeys again, and 200 pounds of potatoes, with help from the National Honor Society, and a lot of my regulars, and a lot of people who just stepped up to help. Walmart was one, I had some interesting conversations with the management of Walmart about them wanting to get involved with some stuff, they have a grant that I think we're going to apply for, for community cafe and Thanksgiving dinner, and then one of them asked me, "What, tell me something, who would we ask about this, like, keep Alma beautiful thing, we'd like to get involved with that," so I did a 360 and turned around and said, "This is city commissioner Roger Alvin, you can talk to me about that," but they're very interested in doing some stuff and becoming supportive of the city. The thing that most impressed me this year with the Thanksgiving dinner, as you know, my family has done that for, I don't know how many years, a whole bunch, and I think there's going to be an article in the Herald coming up, maybe this week about it, but how many of the people who volunteered to work thanked me for asking them to come and work, and could we come next year and do the same thing again, they enjoyed it so much, and it is, it was organized chaos when Noom came, and I had things going out the door every place, and, but, you know, but it all worked, everything came together with the help of a lot of people who smiled through the whole thing and worked through the whole thing, and want to come back next year, so, that just, that makes my heart feel good, when people say, "Thank you for letting us work," I enjoy that, so.
Very good, well, thank you, Roger, and your family, and volunteers, so.
How are you?
Good, all our two gentlemen, the chief and the fire chief, and also Alma College, congratulations also, and also to Alma College's theater department, did an excellent job with musical, they just finished both with cabaret, so it was enjoyable to see excellent production in the theater, and seeing their football team doing so well, and thank you to Roger for all the years of putting that community cafe together, it's a, it's a great tribute to this community.
I can literally say my.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I'd like to thank Jack and Harold, they've done a wonderful job, and been a mentor to several people, so we are very lucky to have them in our community, and yes, that was very fun. Topher and Jeff May listened at home, very fun, we were all, so they were good, and so we're excited to welcome everybody to Alma on Saturday, it's going to be a very busy day, did see that they moved the girls' basketball a couple hours, because we're going to have a couple thousand people visiting, so, hopefully they'll be shopping downtown or eating before or after, so, hope still on this weekend.
Yeah, congratulations again to Harold House and Jack Snyder, that's amazing. The football team, of course, I have to say congratulations to, that was an exciting game, I know the video was behind the paywall, but it is free now, if you want to go back and relive that fourth quarter where they scored 24 points. Yeah, I guess the number two team in the, in the country, I saw they posted a unique stat today, this Saturday, there's one football game in the state of Michigan, and it's in Alma. I thought that that is pretty cool, that can't happen. So, I thought that was a neat stat, and, yeah, congratulations to everybody involved with cabaret at the college as well, that was amazing.
Including your niece.
Yeah, yeah, my niece did a good job. And, and thank you, Roger, for all the years of the community cafe, that's such a cool thing, yeah.
Thank you. Sarah?
And also, thank you.
I'll just echo everyone's comments, I'm looking forward to all the visitors coming in, and it was great that they moved the girls' basketball game back a little bit, so, again, tons of things to do, so, hopefully people get out and start enjoying some of the activities going around, or volunteering for different activities that are happening in the community, so. And then, of course, thanks to Jack and Harry, I appreciate working with them for all these years, I've been with them half that time, I've been here 25, so, I thank them very much.
Yes, career well set.
One other thing, there is a play opening this weekend, and Alma Gratchit County players are opening a Doll's House, which is a Henrik Ibsen classic, it's a fairly short play, I think it's inside of an hour, Claudia Brewer-McLachlan is directing it and has done a wonderful job. It's a small cast, it's a short play, it's very well worth seeing, and we encourage people to get out to see more than the musicals, we try to do something that's, you know, a little bit, a little bit more on an intellectual level, or what could be called good theater every year or so, every year, and this is, this is one of those two plays that are kind of back-to-back, this one coming up, and then we're doing Little Women early in February, so, but, it's worth seeing, it's worth your time. Opens Friday.
Thank you, Roger, they're always fun, and there's, it's always amazing the talent that comes forward.
It is.
And the little playhouse that we have, or the athletic teams or anything, and certainly add my congratulations to Roger and Jack, or Jack and Harold, they have 50 years apiece, that's amazing career, and as somebody mentioned, the mentorship that they've provided for the rest of the team is really unheard of, so, that's great news. Certainly, I go everywhere in the college, and everything's going on up there, and Roger, you said it very well, that, you know, between Eric and talking about the calendar, that there's nothing to do in town, there is tons to do in town.
Yeah.
A lot of those, on top of that, there's a lot of volunteer opportunities, which, as you so eloquently said, Roger, it's more fun for the participant that's volunteers, I think you get a lot more out of it, and it can be more fun than the participants that are on the other side of things, so, encourage everybody to get out and either attend or volunteer, fun things to do, so. With that, we'll open up to the public, if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes, share your thoughts.
Jerry and I are state representative, just a little update on what's probably easier said what's not going on down in Lansing. Sin and die's over recess for the rest of the year, unless the governor decides to call us back for a special session, which, there isn't anything on the horizon that's pressing that we know of yet. Reason for the early sin and die there, two reasons is on account, that it was the only way that they're going to be able to move up the presidential primary, and also because we lost two Democrat representatives to elections for mayor in the Detroit area, so, leadership does not want to deal with a split house or shared power for the rest of the year. Looks like those elections, for the, to fill those two representative seats will be held sometime in, in early April, or in May, or March, excuse me, depending on how they got set up the primary and the general elections for those two, those dates are still up in the area, supposedly by the end of this week, if not earlier, they'll have that settled. And, as clerks know, they're still working out all the election rules and requirements for that, you guys are getting the information just as fast as I am, so, you know, stay tuned to your regular sources, if I hear anything different, I'll be glad to let you know, but, you guys will be getting the information equally as fast. Other than that, unless you've got any questions there, I'm honored to still be a part of this community.
Well, we appreciate you joining us tonight, and we appreciate you coming to recognize two of our fine staff members that have served us very handsomely over the years, so, appreciate you joining us.
It's been an honor to work with people that have been on, or have been on the same career almost as long as I've been alive. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I just have a couple of.
Please, don't pull, you know, you might get your neck while you're up there.
You probably know that Sam Bush, or Sam Smith, I'm sorry, I know Sam Bush, who, Sam Smith has resigned, he wants to travel, he's going to be in Florida, and then, after Florida, he's going to go to Alaska for six weeks, so he thought that he should no longer be a commissioner. We did appoint a new commissioner, Steve Shopsy, as our new commissioner, started the last meeting this month, and then we also, I'm the vice chair, I was chair for a couple weeks, and we, we elected a new chair, I just hope he does as well as Sam, which is Dave Owens, we kind of tease him, so. So, he's our new chair of the board, and that's what I have to tell you this week, for this month.
Thank you, Dan. Congratulations, Dan. Anybody else like to address the commission?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. Motion's support, last chance, anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion is carried, we are adjourned, thank you very much, have a great evening.